Boards and Commissions Committee hearing for the July the twenty eighth. CPO twenty twenty dash thirty, an ordinance of the Gary Common Council, revitalizing the City of Gary Youth Council sponsored by Councilwoman Linda Barnes Caldwell of the Fifth District. Previously, we discussed some of it and we left it in committee. So we're back tonight to try to finalize it so we can take it for a vote. At this time, does anyone have any comments, corrections, or input on what we have written right now?
I do, Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilwoman Atkins.
So I just kind of took the process that we discussed in the last committee meeting. I looked at the information that Councilwoman Lay provided through Ms. White. And then I also, you know, just took notes in terms of when he was giving a commentary about the PAGE program. And then also, the last committee meeting, Councilwoman Brewer also talked about some aspects of what he remembered from the Gary Common Council Youth Council when it was in existence. And then I just took some best practices along with the Indiana State Senate, as well as the Indiana State House Senate program, PAGE program as well. So I just documented, you know, what I felt was, you know, best practices and thought that I could present that to the committee for consideration. Because I think one of the main things from Councilwoman, I mean, Councilman Ladies, commentary that I took was like the structure, you know, what are they going to get out of it? Who's going to teach them? Mentorship? So I think those are relevant aspects of it. And I just wanted to, if it's okay, just let you guys know. And I could send this to you all, but I just took notes. So some of the like comparison things that we were missing was like the structure that I just mentioned. And this is like, these are the notes that I have from like the Gary PAGE program. So documentation in terms of the various lessons. So in one of the supplemental documents that Mr. Lay provided, there was a PDF that it just spoke to, the students had to read some required lesson. So I would suggest that there's like, you know, curriculum formulation. I think that that's what he mentioned in terms of like partnering with Harvard to have some type of curriculum to implement because you want the students to get something out of it, right? And then also like the school credit aspect of it, that is a part of, I think, the Gary PAGE program that was initially established, as well as both the Indiana Senate, as well as the Indiana House programs that might be relevant to us as well. I don't know, something. Also, like the interaction with the state legislators will be probably some good benefits of the program to implement. And then we need to identify like age requirements. So the Indiana House PAGE program, their age requirement stated it was thirteen years and older. The Indiana Senate PAGE program is grade six through twelve. And I didn't see, I believe maybe the Gary PAGE program information was just like high school age because each individual who was listed on that particular document was a part of a act of high school at that time.
Councilwoman Lay, it was eleventh and twelfth grade, right?
For the Gary PAGE program?
Uh huh.
I don't know, Mr. Lay?
Yes, it was eleven, twelve, junior seniors.
Eleven and twelve, okay. And then I also just kind of combined between those three and then also some of, some of the seasoned council members might know about, you know, the NLC. So they have on their website information about starting a youth council. And they have some like best practices related to youth engagement, structure. They had like a toolkit that's on the site that we could probably use if you wanted to, Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell, to create, you know, the additional structure that you were looking for. So it talked about like the curriculum, branches of government, legislative dive in, key statutes and reviews of that, the process of passing a bill, an ordinance at all levels of government, local, state, and federal, leadership training, how to present, robber's rules of order. Also related to structure was like the meeting frequency, the location of the meetings, mentorship, identifying what that looks like, who are the mentors, what are their interaction with the participants, local civic engagement, you know, is there a requirement to attend a certain number of council meetings or a certain number of commission meetings? And then the timeline, we kind of talked about that. Does the program start in January of every year? What is the term limits? Is it, you know, for two years, et cetera? Identify the number of participants. We had conversations about that in the past. Do we want the, you know, how many do we want and how, clarity on how they are appointed? So this document that's on the NLC provides some insight on those types of things. It also has like application structure for parental consent that is needed. There's an application that you can use as a template. And some of the requirements on the application speaks to like the GPA, we have a GPA requirement. If there's some type of community service that we want the applicants to have as a part of their application requirements. A letter, of course, expressing interest in civic government. And then also, there was the application requirement for, well, a form for photo release. So in the packet that Mr. Lay provided to us as well, it was like, you know, different photos that the students take. So you want to make sure that you have consent to utilize those as you market the program going forward. And then enrollment, like the target timeline, the close dates, the open dates in terms of where you're going to accept the application. And then it just talked about like defining the objective and mission. To promote civic engagement and inspire the next generation of civic leaders. And then you want to make sure that your curriculum speaks to the youth council having a conduit for providing the youth voice to city leadership and also, again, to communicate, community service and foster an understanding on how municipal government works. Yeah, and so then it was like on the NLC, in the document that they have, they have all types of like eighty-three percent of youth councils across municipalities look like this. So just wanted to give you guys that to ponder on. And I could send it to you, Councilwoman, just for the committee. I'm not on the committee, but, you know, it was interesting. So I just took the time to kind of put that together.
Well, Councilwoman Brewer, a lot of that sounded like what the youth council that we had the last few years sounded like a lot of them. So did you get an opportunity to get anything from your work?
There is no supporting documents that was, that we have found thus far because, you know, everything was housed at eight thirty nine. There was a lot of stuff left there, eight thirty nine, because they just couldn't bring everything. But before that, we had went through probably two directors since then, once the youth council dissolved, pretty much. So trying to find those documents. Only thing, I have reached out to two of the formal youth council representatives pretty much that worked to help put it together. And I should get some information back from them. But I think what Councilwoman Atkins has presented tonight, a good point where we need to start it, definitely. Just, just go back just a little bit. This was brought to me by young people that were brought. And they brought this to me about forming a youth council at that time because they felt there was a disconnect from elected officials and the youth and the voice of the youth. And so it was, it was mirrored after the city council, where it mirrored after our local government, period. And it was basically giving them an entryway on how we operate and for that they can get a better interest in it. Because coming from youth, no one wanted to serve in these roles because, you know, they said, well, just older people served in the role. Young people were just leaving, going away. So we wanted to strike their interest in their city government, what was going on. But I think what we have heard from Councilwoman Atkins, Mr. Lay has laid out a tremendous program, a great program. I think it's something that we should be able to put together, something where our young people can really be proud and represent this community well.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, sir.
What I think we should have is a, certainly, I've stated my position. I think you should go forward with the program and what Councilwoman Atkins said is, pretty much is completed. Some things are not accurate, but I understand why it's not just the document she was sent. So I would suggest you, you proceed with what has already been done. I'm sure the seven or eight of you can put that together, put it together as part of the Youth Foundation and get it out, you know, get it out of the way. I certainly will continue with what I'm doing. It's, it's all the way up the line. There are some probably significant differences between what I did in nineteen ninety-eight and, and your youth council. And that's what the documents were. They were from your youth council. What I'm doing now is far beyond, far beyond what I did in ninety-eight. In other words, on August the fourth, I certainly will give you a complete layout verbally by August the seventh. I will give you a written syllabus of the particular thing I'm talking about. There are numerous people willing to act, but I think you should proceed with your youth council. I really do. And people of color need a lot of help. We really do because they're being miseducated and they're going to even be further miseducated based upon this coronavirus. There are going to be, of course, a Zoom study that is going to go on. Unfortunately, they are not going to get much help at home. If you look at the school system now, when I was in school, we had study hours. Now, they spend all of this time in school and probably by the time they leave, they, they're not prepared to do additional study. What I'm talking about, you would never see them in terms of they're not pages. What I'm also doing is something else that I'm not sure the council should do. The highest risk group currently, and I've read some articles, I'll be sure to send you articles, but I knew before I read the article, is the African-American male. It's in very high risk of going either to jail or getting killed. And so I'm only looking at the male, which in some ways validates something I believe in. Your program is going to be multi-gender, I would assume. So why not proceed with that? Whatever number you're handling or will handle will just simply be additional. I'm only going to do, I'm doing a pilot program. And it does, it's all over the place. I mean, we, we've ordered books, what Councilwoman Ty Atkins mentioned. I will teach, you probably will be required, as far as I can tell, in order to get them today, some type of credit from, at the state level, you may have to have a certified teacher or a teacher that's, that, at least on emergency license. I do, since I was at the last committee meeting, I have contact with Indiana University, the Dean of the School of Education. I have proceeded forward. Oddly enough, the people tonight were complaining. I had to send my resume forward to, matter of fact, I think the principal, Bill Bowman has it, as well as the principal at Westside Academy. And, oh, it's several other people for me to even to proceed to get the emergency license. And that has not been resolved. I've been dealing with elected officials also. I'm waiting now on confirmation from the governor, as well as Pete Fiskowski. But all of the local political people, we're talking about small seminars. So I would suggest that you proceed with what Councilwoman Atkins talked about. Proceed with the, we need, we need as many people working on this as possible rather than, and again, I, I think Councilwoman Caldwell misunderstood that I was not being sent to change anything. Councilman Godman had said jokingly, that, well, why don't you do it? So again, I think here, everyone can be the mentor and the teaching, all of that can go on. And so I would suggest that you have a good framework from what you've done in the past. And Councilwoman Atkins, I think, sees me have a good grasp whether she's on the committee or not. Oddly enough, I'm not on the committee either. So it was something that I just simply had an interest in and it will take a tremendous amount of time to do. I mean, I probably do that almost every day. That's what I, what I, what I work on. So I think we both can, can do the same thing, go in two different directions and probably arrive at the same end. That, that's where it is now. Because I can't dove my program back into the council. I did not seek council funding. And I certainly didn't, didn't seek it to be against me, but I didn't seek it to do anything. I think I'm well along the way.
Councilwoman Lay, so your program is only going to be towards the males?
Yes, you can. I don't think you can do that as a council. Yes, that's it. I'm going, and the way they're selected is selected by the principals of the four schools. All I can do is, would be to interview them and let their parents interview me at the same time. And in other words, explain exactly what we're talking about doing. One of the reasons I also, other than the high-risk group, pretty predominantly what's in my group, people are males. So I'm not, so part of it is that these, these people, the, whoever they are, will be male. They will call these individuals or have contact. I would not want to be part of anything where junior, senior females are calling men. I don't think their family would be in agreement to that either. And the smallest thing could be misunderstood. Someone says something innocently that's misunderstood. So that's, that was the second reason I decided to go with the males. I don't think that would be a good position even for the city council to take. I think you have to use both genders. That's why I say I'm sort of violating my own rule because I'm looking at them as the high-risk and I've been spending time, you know, just simply looking at that. So I think both programs should go on myself.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? You know, we, there's nine of us. I guess the question I want to ask is, do we think now is a good time? Given all this going on with COVID, do we have the resources to really do a youth council? I mean, who's going to take the lead on that? I just want to be realistic. If we create this, who's going to operationalize it?
Well, right now, we don't have a director of the youth council, right?
Right. Are the youth services or the youth council?
We don't have a director.
We don't have a director yet. We serve here, no.
Well, in the past, that's who's been working with them. So my thing is, if we get the ordinance together, when we get a director and, and children that are willing to participate, we'll be ready. I wish that we could combine the two, Councilwoman Lay and Councilwoman Atkins, together.
I'll give you, I'll give you a written, I'll give you a-
We talked about this as a group and the plan was for us to get the best practice. Everything that was presented, this is not Councilwoman Atkins' part. I just put everything together.
You did a wonderful job. You did a wonderful job.
That's all I did. That's what we said we were going to do as a group. We were going to bring everything together, all three elements and try to figure out the best way to move forward. And that game plan just went by the wayside.
Only one person's left in nine. And then one, they used to say, one monkey don't stop to show. What I will do is give you a written syllabus, if that'll help you mine. I will probably have that ready because I'm going to submit it to the state, probably August the seventh. I pretty much know what it is, it's being written and people are pretty much in place. I think Mr. Godwin raises a question. It wouldn't matter. My program would require, requires a tremendous amount of contact hours. I reduced it today, you know, personally. It's small seminars, it's teaching. So you may not want to do this. I'm teaching open door, I'm buying books on parliamentary procedure, which the council has that, but it's so much, my book is going to be much simpler than I'm purchasing. So, so again, I don't have any problem giving you my syllabus. I have no problem stating publicly exactly what I'm trying to do. I can do that at the August fourth meeting, say exactly. Again, I think the two programs, you know, like section two, I want to change it, the majority don't. So same thing here. If, I think you should have and go for what you've already dealt with. There was some misunderstanding and certainly, I don't think, oh, an apology for it because I didn't see it coming. And, but I think it benefited what I'm trying to do. And that is, I can take these twelve, it's, it's a pilot project. Once, you know, I do the twelve, someone may pick it, we're going to record everything. Someone else may pick it up and try to take it further. I just think we're going to have to think of how we're going to educate our, our young people differently than we've been doing or the school system's been doing.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I, I think, so Mr. Councilwoman Lay, your organization, will it be a five oh one C three?
Yes, but what we're going to do is the funding, there is a five oh one C three I'm combined with. But I may offer the five oh one C three, maybe payments to Trinity Church. I've dealt with Pastor Gardner. He's part of it. We're developing a religious element as part of the group, which is not mandatory.
You're making it hard for us to support it now. Not because I don't support religion, but if we, we can't make contributions to churches.
No, 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 I'm not, I don't want any council money. No, 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 no council money. In other words, at this point, I have a tremendous amount of, you know, financial support as people individually. I'm sending up so they get tax, no, I don't want any. I don't know what, what I would do with it. In other words, today, I would have made sports good to get cardigan sweaters and all of that to put them in the group. Of course, I don't know the size of the people yet. But, no, again, I'm asking you to proceed with the program you had in mind before, you know, I brought it up. So that's what I'm asking. No, I don't want money.
So Mr. Lay, are you bringing your ordinance? You're not bringing an ordinance to the council?
No, no, no. I will not bring an ordinance. I will not, I may deal with the mayor on something, but no, I'm not going to bring the ordinance whatsoever. I basically will placate universities and the State Board of Education. Whatever they require me to do, you know, I'm willing to do. Like I said, at the state level, they said, well, you may need a license, either a substitute license or an emergency license. I think in terms of what I'm talking about, teaching the course at the state level is fifteen thirty-six, but it's incomplete because it does not deal with electric school boards, nor does it deal with the federal government. I will do both. I will teach them both. I will buy books for both. So now, no, I won't seek any, any, no, any ordinance or anything like that.
I, I want to go back to my question, Madam Chair. You know, I guess if we're saying it's going to be the, I don't know what we're saying exactly. I think the ordinance has the mayor appointing people, various, various parties. I know at one point, there was discussion about it being sort of completely council-driven. And if that's the case, I don't know if we can count on whoever the Youth Services Bureau person is to do this or is something that we should be doing. And I just don't know, given all this going on. I mean, I, I support the concept, but I just don't know if we have the capacity to really do it, especially given all that's going on. I mean, who's going to take the lead on this? I mean, most of us are, got a lot going on, just, you know, with city business. And so we really, you know, there's an old saying, when everybody's in charge, nobody's in charge. So there needs to be somebody who's going to own it. Now, what I would, what I would hope that we might be able to do, just like we have the commission on black males, I don't think we give them financial support. I don't think we do.
The mayor gives, it's something that comes out of the budget for Mr. Muhammad.
Okay, so we can, as a city, give something to something that's only for black men. It's sort of similar to the president's Becoming a Man Initiative. President Obama's Becoming a Man Initiative, there's another name for it, I can't think of it right now. But I know he had a big initiative around black and Latino boys. So I think if we wanted to, we could support something like what Councilman Lay is doing. I know he doesn't want any, any money. But I think that, I think that what I'm, I hope that maybe we can find some kind of compromise whereby what he is doing, we can be associated with and supportive of it. Because I don't think we have the resources as a city and as a council to have duplicative efforts. And I mean, given, I don't think it makes sense for Councilman Lay is, he can obviously do whatever he wants to as a private citizen. But if he's already doing something that would enhance youth in the city or help us achieve basically what this ordinance is trying to do, I don't know if we want to have us trying to do something and he's doing something. Well, we could just simply try to integrate or support what he's doing, even if it's philosophically supportive of it. I, I just, if, since we don't have the infrastructure to do it, that's all I would just want to suggest. We can't make him take our support, but I wish he could.
I mean, if you guys want to pass a resolution saying that you, you support the idea, in other words, I know Indiana University will, is going to give the, the young people a certificate. I certainly believe the governor will give them one if you complete the program. Not only that, I'm going to, you know, get class rings and things of that nature will give you.
I want to be in the program.
You get a sweater, a class? In the paper picture, meeting the governor?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, that's it. These, these young people, and again, I don't know who they are, but the chances are, the governor is considering it. They're trying to work out his schedule. I said, if you want to, you can make it out to the first year, but you got to win to do it. When you can't do it, we're going to have a fairly good police element. We're going to have a fire element. Again, I certainly would welcome, you know, if you guys, a resolution saying I support it. Now, this is not the first time that I've attempted to do something where I didn't seek council money. And that, you remember, the pants that you wear. Right now, Gloria Slade paid for these pants. In other words, I may be able to recoup the funds from spectacle, but I, once we didn't do the back with, it stopped everything. And so that's not the first time. Matter of fact, when I asked my friend and buddy for money, he told me he didn't have any. So I'm not going to, I'm not going, I'm not going to give you his name, but RB. Told me he didn't have no money. So I proceeded and invested my own money in order to put on the, so this isn't, this isn't new. It's something that I have- so this isn't- this isn't new. It's something that I have an interest in doing. I had it in 98 and, uh, I left everything in file for some reason. Most of what I left is- is not there now. So, uh, so no, it's not that I don't like, but as you- if you accept reason, your parents could tell you what to do. Wasn't so much your birthday. Fed you every day and- and housed you. So when you didn't want to take their advice, you- you had to leave the house. So in- in this case, I don't- I don't- if I needed the funding, I'm not sure you would, you know, I- I could get it, but, uh, I mean, we go through. I looked at this promotional committee, you know, I- I- and I- and I- what I- what I think Mr. Godwin is saying, I- I know you're going to- you're really going to have to put in a lot of time now. He- he's right about that. Whoever handles the operation of it is going to be a lot of time. The only thing that was different, I didn't understand why all of these different elements were getting your pages. That's what I was talking about. Uh, you certainly could do small seminars by sending them to these various places, but I didn't see why they going to- why they going to get pages out. Uh, the- the- the mayor has agreed to, uh, purchase, uh, two sweaters and also to be a resource person. That resource, he would basically, they would- they would- they would meet him over Zoom along with, uh, other elected officials. I would have no problem if somebody want- from the council wanted to do it, but I knew you were going to be doing your own program. So, you know, I was going to let you, uh, you know, proceed with that as opposed to bother you in any kind of way. That's all. I- 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 I hope this makes sense, uh, that, uh, I was of the impression there would be two distinct things being done. Uh, and one would be, uh, this youth- this youth service group, uh, who would coordinate. And whatever you did in the past, I would assume you would do it currently. This is altogether different what I'm talking about. It- it- it's not even close to what I did in 98. That no, I suspect what you've done was not even close to it. So that's- that's all I'm suggesting.
Well, the thing is, we haven't done anything. I wasn't a part of the Youth Service Bureau. I saw them when they came to our meetings. I saw them when they went to Washington, one of us, on, um, conference. And occasionally, they, like I said, they came to our meetings. So Councilman Brewer had Maureen put with them.
Well, that may be a person to head it up, at least with the help of seven other people. And, yeah, I mean, that- you may have, but that is, that Mr. Godwin, since he's laughing at it, put him on there. And that Miss Atkins, since she's the only one that wrote down stuff, and she- but that is, you know, and I suspect it will be quite successful. I mean, it's going to be a lot of fun. It really- it really will be a lot of fun. Uh, and, uh, basically, no matter what I do, I like to deal with young people. I- I really do. I- I always have. See, my top politics is geared toward young people, which sometimes people don't understand it, but it's geared that way.
You're going to have to get some, um, some sweaters too. Some sweaters and, uh-
Oh, I- I-
Nothing, huh?
No, no, no. I asked- no, I asked the mayor. No, wait a minute. I don't- I asked the mayor to buy sweaters. Arlene- Arlene Coleman is buying one. Uh, Paul is buying one. Some of these people are straight out volunteering to do that.
So you have sponsorship for these-
Oliver- Oliver Gilliam, Charlie Brown, Kyle Allen. In- in other words, they are going to provide the dollars. You remember I mentioned, and I hope he- I don't trap him into doing, giving you guys money for your program. Uh, I called, uh, I called Attorney, uh, Renshaw Williams to get him to buy a- a sweater. And he immediately said, "Oh, no." I, uh, he said, "Well, I'll give you $500." And because we are close and he's buying all the books. So it- it- there's no- when I talk to, um, talk to John Keeler from Spectacle, as he usually say, "You brought me to one dance. I'll come to another dance with you and I'll stand by if you need help." Currently, I don't need any help. I negotiated, I can't remember his ne- last name, Richard, who was the owner of Maine Sporting Goods. I negotiated things over there today concerning those, uh, those sweaters. Doctor, uh, Cheryl Pruitt is helping me put together the syllabus, the course outline, uh, and- and stuff of that nature. So now, when you say, "Can I go get it?", uh, the eight of you certainly have greater powers to, uh, to solicit sweaters and things, but most of them, I was, people heard about it and just simply volunteered. They don't even care about tax exemption. Oh, I called my pastor, uh, Reverend Gardner, to ask him where did he get the sweaters for the children in the church. As- as, uh, as you rise, he said, "Oh, I get them from Maine Sporting Goods." I used to go to Maine for the Martin Luther King Breakfast. And he said, "Oh, by the way, if you got- if you get nine, I'll buy two unsolicited." Uh, he- he, so without really much work on my part, uh, you know, I called a couple of people in this whole process. Oh, Earl Harris is going to buy one. Norman, uh, uh, Bailey is going to buy one. Um, Calvin, um, Bankhead is going to buy one. I'm going to buy one if necessary. That's how it was done. I mean, people that I knew, I went and- and I went forward and said, "Listen." Then I had these volunteers, like I say, Arlene and, um, uh, oh, Trent, said Trent McCain, said he buy one. He's going to discuss with these young people fraternities, you know, Kappa. In this case, this is Kappa. So that's how you- how you do it. So I- I didn't get it from no single source.
So Madam Chair, it looks like, you know, Mr. Lay has his program, will be marketing his program on his own. So I guess you just need to make a, you know, decision how you want to move forward. If you want to, like, try to formulate more structure and then wait until later on to- to start or? How do you feel? What you want to do?
As long as- long as the ordinance is on the books, it can happen now, it can happen later. Um, if we get someone who, like, the group of just doing the CBE, well, it's the CBA, we get someone that's interested in doing the youth council, they already have the structure laid out.
Do we want to have all the mayor and the judge involved? What was the thought on that?
Um, I was still at, how many? We were going to have? Six, nine, 12? And if it's just going to be with, um, council, that's fine.
Because if the mayor is not interested, I don't know that-
Well, the mayor is interested in Councilman Lay's project.
Oh, he bought- he bought sweaters. He's not- he has no interest in my project. So I think that's doing an injustice, because you would then say, "Well, this other person had an interest." It's not the lack of interest. I ask him.
You have his support, yes.
Yeah, I ask- I ask people. I mean, uh, so he said he would buy two sweaters and I would have asked him, if he had have said, "No," I still would have used him as a person that takes an interview. He's an elected official. But no, I don't think- I- I'm not asking him to this project over it. That- that's un- that- that's really unfair to him to say that, or any of them, any of them. I even said, "I hope that I don't get Rensh- Mr. Williams put up $500 for the council program because he did it out of wanting to help me with the youngsters there." I get- I don't get paid, I mean, so, uh, anything of that nature.
Councilman Brewer?
Well, I could say, when you- you spoke about the mayor not being involved in it, um, there will be other mayors that will come. There'll be other judges, other clerks. And I think what we should do in a language where they, um, say, "Shale," we should put, or say, "May," we should put "shale" um, in those spots there, where it gives them the option to participate. But if not, we could still move beyond that scope and we're just not stuck there trying to force someone to participate in it. Um, but it was basically to get the young people, as I stated earlier, to get a broader scope. What we do as local elected officials, I understand Ms. Lay is on a- a different scope, but we've been trying to get them more involved. What takes place locally here, to get them more involved locally and to get us as elected officials to have some type of dialogue with young people, because there's a great disconnect, whether we believe it or not, with the young people and us as older people and as elected officials inside our city. So, um, it started off with just the- the council. We, um, eventually branched off where we had some other adults that came on that helped supervise the program and then eventually went over to the Youth Service Bureau. So that's how it ended up at the Youth Service Bureau. But we did have volunteer, um, that stepped up to help out with the youth council and then eventually went full circle all the way over to the Youth Service Bureau.
Okay. So how many, um, members are we looking at having?
I would say keep the nine.
Nine? Okay. Um, we, um, appoint all of them or what are we doing?
Well, um, I believe the council should have the first, um, three. I mean, the first six should be. And then the other three should go to those other departments that I outlined, um, earlier. It should go to them. If they opt out, the council will take those appointments and make the appointments themselves.
Mayor, clerk, and judge?
Yeah. Now, this is just my, since that's the way we formulated last time, that's why I want keeping it that way. But if someone else feel different, we're a council and we work that way.
Okay. So we get the paperwork together, we pass the ordinance, and?
But I think, as Councilwoman Atkins said, I think we need to make sure that structure is in place. That's very important now, because right now, we don't have anyone that's leading the youth council. We don't even have a direct over Youth Service Bureau. We can even appoint them too. So I believe we need to make sure that we put the structure in place. So if we don't have it all together tonight, I think we- we still have time where we can work on this.
Yes. Work on the ordinance and the structure and then present it. And when Councilman Godwin, we get someone that's interested, after, um, maybe even, uh, Boards and Commissions can appoint someone who's interested in leading the youth. And then again, I don't know.
Well, you know, all the appointments still go through Boards and Commission for the final appointment.
Yes.
Adam, uh, chairperson?
Yes, sir.
You made- you just made an absolute good suggestion. What you would do is to publicize, uh, for people to do what you need done and formulate- and formulate a, um, committee to do that. In other words, you would advertise that you want people to- to assist in- in coordinating. That would be- that would cover what Mr. Godwin says is a deficiency. Uh, and there, if you put them under the council like that, you probably could use your funds or at least get it clear that you could use your funds for such a program. And, uh, you would simply would just publish, I- I don't know that you need, you got three people and you- again, I'm- I'm one of these people that like to see some kind of resume. They would- they would apply, give a resume, you would interview them, and then make the decision. And I believe you can- so that would take care of you any problem. That would give you the persons to do it and also I think you could fund them. Uh, you certainly could write it in your budget and fund that group. So that covers everything, I think.
All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns? No? All right. Well, that concludes the Boards and Commissions meeting for July the 27th. Thank you all.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Sorry, the twenty-eighth. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Okay, good night. Be safe.